And call the meeting to order. I need a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm moved.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines. All in favor? All opposed? That's a five-one. If the clerk would read the additions.
To the policy agenda, excuse me, we're substituting four D. Ordinants pertaining to temporary sign permits to the consent agenda, we're adding five J. Resolution accepting the bid of JE boys for commercial dock repairs.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Five-one. We'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of presentations to make or presentations to take place. And first, I'd like to ask all Tina and your crew to come up so I can read this proclamation on a very special day with our four-legged friends. For our TV audience, okay, come on up here. Very good. All right. This proclamation, whereas Pet Partners has designated April thirty as National Therapy Animal Day. Pet Partners Therapy Animals Teams in Biloxi play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human animal bond. Pet Partners Therapy Animal Teams like make millions of visits a year to hospitals, nursing homes, schools, hospices, and interact with a variety of people such as veterans, senior citizens, patients, students, facing literacy challenges, and those approaching end of life. These acceptable therapy animals who partner with your human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need. Therefore, I Andrew Fofo Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, do hereby proclaim the thirtieth day of April twenty-twenty-two as National Therapy Animal Day. So congratulations for everything. Do a little photo op. There you go.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. All right, next thing, Bobby. Where did Bobby go? Bobby, come on up here. Bobby's gonna give us a little update on the coding academy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, you're good.
Hi. My name is Bobby Gillen. Most of you might not recognize me without a baseball hat, but I work on Howard Avenue with the District on Howard Group. I'm also the president of Biloxi Main Street. And for the last year and a half, I've been working with a group out of Jackson called the Mississippi Coding Academies. And I'd like to talk to you all about what we've accomplished thus far and where we're headed and just kind of give you an update. We have a video that I'd like to play that'll be a good primer. So if we could, if you wouldn't mind.
So before the coding academy, I was just working as many jobs as I could. I was working at the bar back. I was working in fast food restaurants. I just stopped searching to see where I could land a future career or maybe go up into my career.
I did a research about the job outlook and salary and what coding was, and I felt that it was a good decision to make.
Grocery stores, restaurants, call centers. I never did really feel as fulfilled as I did when I got my first job after I graduated from the Mississippi Coding Academies.
Because of something that happened at home, I had to drop, well, take a pause at school. So once I was ready to go back, I had been told about the coding academy. I was like, okay, you know, I could give it a chance another year. And I came here and fell in love with coding and computer programming.
For any idea or any concept to have momentum, it's got to be driven by need. In our case, within our city alone, there are thousands of open jobs in technology.
One of the things right now, many of our businesses are challenged around restaffing, finding good people, finding people who have diverse skills. That's what employers are looking for in Mississippi.
The Mississippi Coding Academies are part of a collective effort in the state to provide multiple pathways for citizens to gain education in computing and then persist into computing careers. As a workforce development program, we take students who have just recently completed their GED or graduated from high school, and we teach them software development from, you know, front-end presentation layer development all the way to backend. And we work with employers in the state to get them positions when they finish the program.
So typically, day starts at nine o'clock. I might give a little bit of lecture, maybe thirty, forty-five minutes, depending on what we're covering. And then we're doing the work, right? It's very hands-on. We treat it more like work as opposed to school. So there's not any homework or quizzes or tests or anything like that. It is, I give you a project, here's this thing I need you to do, go out and do it.
We think it's unique. Some of the tech companies have said they haven't seen anything like it, and we've begun to get recognition at the national level with entities like the X Prize, MIT Solve.
Not only are they working towards becoming a full-stack developer, but they already carry the critical thinking aspect of what is needed for this particular job field. I've been doing this a long time. And although, yeah, I can fix a computer, my job really is to fix computers. It's generally to think about things from a technology perspective and how it can better serve the Mississippi. And that's what I was looking for in our partnership with the academy.
So having a location right here in South Jackson where there's a very large population of people of color, for it to be here and be able to empower the individuals here, both young and old, into the tech industry was phenomenal.
We reached out to the black population, women in tech, Hispanics, people who may or may not have graduated from high school. We're tapping into that pool, and we're building talent from there. So that's like one of the big things about what we do.
We've been able to increase that participation rate forty-five percent for women. So we're extremely excited about that.
The salary increase.
Being able to purchase my first vehicle, being able to upgrade my living space. Just my lifestyle change for the better.
What we're able to do then, as a result, is to move these young folks into good-paying, middle-class jobs and doing it in the space of a year at no cost to them other than the impressive amount of time and effort that they have to invest in our program to be successful at it.
You know, a perfect scenario, what ends up happening is people realize that we've got a talent pool here of people that are trained and ready to go. And instead of outsourcing your job, you know, you can insource it here.
Any support mission for COVID, we grew our IT staff from three people to thirty-three people. And then the majority of those folks came from the Mississippi Coding Academy.
So if you think about any company that's interested or organizations that's interested in partnering with the coding academies, it's a great return on investment because the entire state improves when we have more people with this course skill.
Instead of it is, we could be graduating a few hundred a year, or we could be graduating several thousand. We'd love to be doing several thousand because at that point, we can really change the state of Mississippi and other regions like Mississippi and the country.
We need to make sure that Mississippians are prepared for the future work. And the future work is everything around technology.
You know, the citizens at work here, they're just as capable as people anywhere else. They just need an opportunity. And I think we can provide some of that.
What we need is to grow this program. We can move the needle for the state of Mississippi's economy as a result of our graduates and their contributions to the economy. To do that, we need your support. We need more stakeholders. We need corporate partners who see the value of this, not just for their own business interests, but also because of the importance of this to our home state. So I'm presenting the opportunity to you today to help us grow, to help us expand, help us touch more lives, help us get more young people directly engaged in the twenty-first century digital economy.
So we've been at this now here in Biloxi for almost two years, believe it or not. Planning and getting this coding academy, its first coastal location. And they came to me and said, where do we go? I said, we come to Biloxi. This is where we start. And for the last two years, I've been organizing corporate stakeholders, and we've launched this program this past fall with the Beau Rivage, Mississippi Power, Keesler Air Force Base, Hancock Whitney Bank, Envision out of Diamond Head, Geo Job out of Gulfport.
Island View.
Island View Casino, and more coming onboard every month. And the reality is, this type of a skill set does not require a four-year computer science degree. What we're offering is an eleven-month tuition-free retooling for individuals. Right now, the plan is we, you have to have a high school diploma or GED to apply. And when we opened up applications for the Coast Academy, we received over three-hundred-and-sixty applications. The three other locations around the state in Jackson and Starkville, over the last three years, combined have not gotten three-hundred-and-sixty applications. The demand was here on the corporate side, and the response was here with applicants. We expected to launch with about ten students. We accepted forty. So we immediately had to go find another location. Luckily, and the silver lining of COVID for us was, we were able to launch virtually for the first period of time for about four or five months. Then we transitioned the class into temporary space over at Miss Geneva Doomers Building on Howard Avenue. And for the last two months, I've been preparing the old Able Labor Spot on the corner of Irish Hill and Porter Avenue for this class, first class, to finish out their eleven-month program. And we're about to open the applications for the second class. So graduation should be sometime in July. The next class will begin in late August, early September. And we hope to grow this, this program, because the need is here. While companies like the M. G. and Beau Rivage have a big corporate IT department, whether in Vegas or DC, companies like Mississippi Power, Hancock Whitney Bank, Island View Casino, they do a lot of their work and their programming here on the coast. And one thing I do want to clarify, I should have, when I say coding, it's not medical coding. We're talking software programming. And what we're in the process of doing is getting that educational pipeline seamless so that students can graduate with this certification and then move up into the community college ranks with credits transferring, should they want to continue their education. Or USM, we heard from Dr. Sarah Lee, she's at the University of Southern Miss. She's working hard on the higher education accreditation so that this certification can continue to transfer so that that piece of paper doesn't just mean your first job. And one of the commitments that we have from our stakeholders that are actively looking at some of our students right now for employment when they graduate is starting salaries are above the state median. So we're talking about thirty-five, forty thousand dollars a year, starting salaries with the opportunity for growth. So we look at this as an opportunity, not just for Biloxi, but for the coast and for our entire economy here. The workforce, and frankly, to me, it's a no-brainer. And we go out not just soliciting dollars from our stakeholders, but more importantly, skills and curriculum guidance. We want to know what our employers need. And we take that into consideration and have developed that into our curriculum. Right now, one of the big feedbacks is cybersecurity. And so we're developing a comp TIA program and certification as part of this program. And I could go on and on. I've been at this now for about two years. But if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to field any at this time.
I only have a question, but I want to add some things to you because we've been there three years ago when we looked at some of the other coding academies, and the drivers were the, the industry that needs those folks, the people who can tie things together and not develop, you know, applications from scratch. But of course, the ones that impressed us were FedEx and C-SPAR. The thing that I was excited about as we developed the curriculum driven by the industry, no other place has, you know, the gaming industry like we have it. And as well as the GIS, Geo Job, and, and, you know, they, I think you've already committed to hiring some folks. But this was really, I think, the reason why you had so many applicants because this is where, you know, the need is for people who can take, you know, the concepts that in programming and deliver it and wind up with a job quickly. But also a future, you know, as you do that. It's a lot of hard work. I congratulate you. And I congratulate, I thank these folks from the casinos. And this was the first for the whole concept. Nobody saw what's happening in each one of these gaming, for instance, these technologies. Look at sports betting. Everything is software-driven, and you gotta tie these things together. A lot of it's purchased, but the interfaces and the things that you'll learn how to attack and do is in this program. So I'm proud of, you know, what's done. And I think we've got a bunch of folks going to get through quickly. And then the next class will be, you know, on and on. So I thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Any questions from the council, Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, Mr. Dillon, if you would, feel contact, man, I'd like to learn a little more. I appreciate it. Thank you. It's a good report. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any questions?
Same thing.
Thank you to the Biloxi Coding Academy, by the way. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, one last thing for us on my mayor's report. I'd like to talk about some things that kind of move things in a direction that we want to investigate is the incident that happened over the weekend, and nobody's happy about it. But I think, you know, it brought to point what needs to be done, what some of the areas that we can explore when it comes to that neighborhood, across the neighborhood traffic between Pops Ferry Landing and Hingein Place. I think we've installed some speed tables, but it, you know, that's become a major route now. And I think there's some things that need to be further investigated. And I think what we'll do is call for a public hearing. Once we're, I think the speed tables is not what needs to be done at this point in time. You know, and checking with our PD and Fire Department. A fence with a knock box may be a solution. I don't know totally what, you know, but I'm, you know, committed to let's have a public hearing and figure out what, you know, what is the best solution for the, you know, the traffic seems to be a thoroughfare now instead of just neighborhood to neighborhood. So a fence, a barrier, whatever it takes so the PD and the Fire Department can keep, you know, the places, you know, a good place, quality of life and equality of place. And I think we'll call for a public hearing, coordinate with you when we can do it.
Yep. Mayor, I appreciate your support. I know you and I met and had extensive discussions over this. And it's certainly different than just traffic. You know, this incident has escalated it to a new plane, and I appreciate your support. So what we'll do, it takes fifteen days to publish, and then we'll schedule the earliest public hearing and try to get this on a fast track to an ultimate solution that everybody is happy with. I'll have more to talk about in the report.
Well, we won't be, we'll have our induction row as far as what it's going to take, pull the trigger, you know, because I think that is probably gut feel will tell us, you know, more drastic than a couple of speed tables to solve, I think, the situation that we're in. But we'll, you know, we're not going to sit back and wait fifteen days. We'll have something that needs to be hammered out as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. That concludes my report.
All right, any department reports? There being a little on the council reports, Mr. Lawrence.
You know, Kenny, what you ought to do is just have a award meeting soon as possible.
What's that?
Just you have a award meeting with the mayor and the police department soon as possible. You don't have to wait, then set up anything you want from there.
Sure.
And like Felix said, that's what he did. Just jumped on it real quick. So that'd be a good thing for you and the people in Hingein Place. Just a suggestion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guines.
No, just one other thing.
All right.
We had a lot of people there last week in the Farther Round area, and they wanted to take it with the mayor to get their, his support to help them keep the neighborhood clean. Are you willing to meet with their group?
Neighborhood what?
With the Farther Round neighborhood, the whole land.
You know, again, I'm willing to meet with anyone. You know, it's all about what we have here and what we're trying to preserve. I figured, you know, understand that there's a, I guess, not a turf battle, but you're protective, protective of the neighborhood that they know and love. And everyone has a chance to rethink things, including the developer. So that was not, you know, wasn't on deaf ears. That was what we heard. And I think I'm happy to add my two cents to what needs to be done for Biloxi and from both ends. I have no pressure. Just call the number we can, I'm happy to meet.
You know, these people trying to protect their homes, their property. I mean, that's serious for them. They live there. So when they just want to know they had the help of the mayor to help keep their land, that's the same value it is now, not changing anything.
Well, I'm willing to listen.
So, all right, we'll get with you then. We'll do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guines.
Yes, again, just my thoughts and prayers are with the family for the person that was injured in that. And Kenny, we pray for the community. On a lighter note, I had a chance to do a welcome for the first annual cannabis festival that they had on the town green and.
On a higher note, a higher note.
Yeah, and it's pretty safe to say that they're high on coming back. So I just wanted to say, thank you.
Mr. Leonard? Mr. Deming?
Just a couple of updates. Mike, if you, you have any update on the Ravenwood or Wood issue for the curbing and the repaving, then also, I'll let you follow up on all this at one time. If we could get a letter out of support to the Harrison County Board of Supervisors regarding the bluffs, see if we could get some communication via, via the board.
Yeah, the bluff, the bluff remains on our list, and that's one that we really need the county's help on.
That's why I would ask that we send a letter requesting support.
The Raven, Ravenwood and Laurelwood, in the case of Ravenwood, that's the one where we have to redo the curb over. And we did some that we didn't like the outcome. We had them tear it out and start over again. I think that contractor is about finished with the curb gutter. We ought to be able to be paving next week. Both of those streets.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, just want to put on record my dissatisfaction with our new insurance company. I don't know, but there's been numerous issues that I've received complaints from so many employees and even myself, you know. But what I, what I've, what I'm dealing with is an anecdotal issue for me, but I'm hearing similar issues that we have with a lot of our, a lot of our employees. If we could schedule a time, maybe get together and really discuss this, but I think it's got to the point where we really have to start talking about doing something different and taking some action.
Yes, to be clear for the audience, that we're talking about the city's medical, employee medical insurance.
Correct. Have nothing else.
Okay, Mr. Deming, I just wanted to comment, there is a, there is a vacancy seriously on the insurance committee. I'd love for you to join our insurance committee. We look at, we look at things just like you were talking about, and I think it would be useful to have a fresh perspective on that insurance committee. Would you accept the invitation to join the insurance committee?
Have your people call my people.
Okay.
Hey, Kenny.
No, I am seriously, so that's an open invitation.
I'm, let me know if you guys care for this.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, several things. Mr. Leonard, Mr. Abid, I'd like to, for us to get together and talk about first responders, annual leave with the COVID-related issues. We've kind of been chatting, reviewing it from time to time for the past couple of years. I kind of like to bring some closure to that. Also, just a reminder that we really need to do something on Pass Road, just there on either side of the Goose Point entrance at that subdivision. Westbound lane, there's a couple of spots, and Mike, we talked about this yesterday, but you just need to get some asphalt in there, do something because it'll tear your vehicle up if you hit it doing the speed limit, so.
I spoke to Public Works earlier today about that, and I'm going to be out there looking at it tomorrow. That's, that's a good job for the group I call the Pothole Platoon.
No, it is. And it's, and there are a number of spots like that on Pass Road. It's just, that's in my ward. And I hit it the other day, and it reminded me that I wanted to follow up. I'd like to take a moment, thank Vincent Creel for his service. I know officially he retires this Friday. At this point, I'd say that I'm going to miss him, but he's a constituent in my ward, so I suspect I haven't heard the last of him. Just to get, but it's always a pleasure to hear the timbre of his soothing voice. Well done, Mr. Creel. Digital sign at Kivet and Highway ninety. I don't know if that's Mr. Bennett's sign. I don't think it's our sign, it's Mr. Bennett's sign. It's right now, it's stuck on anyway. There's an issue with the display, and I don't know what we advertise or he advertises there. I don't know what we can do with that. It's still, it's his contract, I think, isn't it?
And he's fully paid up.
I don't know how many years it runs, or it's just, it's up there. It's really not doing anything. Anyway, I just want to bring it to somebody's attention. Maybe we can do something or urge him to do something with that. When Mr. Deming said insurance, and I've heard comments related to insurance as well. I know the police department, the police chief had Cy Easterly come in and answer questions. And, you know, I've been talking about an insurance roadshow for three or four years now, and I would urge all the department heads to do that, just to have the employees' questions answered if there are wrinkles that need to be ironed down. I mean, we're halfway through the year, and apparently there are still issues. And employees have enough on their plate just to get through the job every day, being shorthanded as we are in all the departments. So anything we can do along those lines to get better information and better service to them, I think we need to follow up on. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Barrett?
I don't have a report, just Mr. Leonard, on the issue I called you about earlier today, if, once we get some kind of answer on that. She just wants to know which, who to contact or whatever to go for.
We're talking about the Love Shack.
Correct.
I've already written Public Works about that this morning. I also wrote the engineering department, and I asked them to look at the RFPs that we're about to put out for the next water sewer extensions to be sure that we have the right kind of language that says that the tap should be put on the appropriate side of the property where the service is going to be received. So we'll play with some language and get that in the RFPs.
Just to include in the future.
More importantly than that, to always talk about it at our post-award pre-construction meetings so that we know that the contractor understands the requirement.
Okay, that's all I had.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barrett. I got a few things, a couple loose ends. First one on Campbell Drive. I know we've been talking about the drainage issue, and there's a pipe that we need to replace. Is there any movement on that project at this time?
The best thing I can tell you on that one, Councilman, is that you all approved the repair, replace contract, rebid. And so as of, as of this, today, I think, that contract's been signed, and we now have a contractor back to go and that we can, and Billy Ray told me that he was taking him around to all the jobs that were open, left over from the last contract. So that'll be one of them they'll look at.
Okay, thank you for the update. Hinged Lane, we talked about it recently. Is there, I've seen some little flags and everything. I don't know if that's our survey or if that's an individual that's doing a survey. Are we doing anything on the?
I'm not aware that our surveyor started, but that is the first step for those. I'm getting a lot of inquiries from one of the people that lives on that street that wants water. And it just makes no sense to us to run six-hundred-and-fifty feet of water pipe, one inch, just for one guy of thirteen on a street. So I'll, we'll try and explain that to him. We could, we could do that temporarily. It wouldn't be terribly expensive, and it's probably cheaper than him drilling a new well. His problem is he's, he's got no well water right now.
Right.
But we don't want to rush this. I mean, we really need to do this in a deliberate manner where we survey. do all the legal work of, uh, sort of transferring the property to the city, then, and design a road, build a road.
And I appreciate that, but I just want to remind the administration that, uh, Westell Drive was a similar situation. They had three or four houses on Westell Drive, uh, we paved that, that's about eight years ago, uh, maybe seven. And right now, there, there's probably nearly thirty, thirty homes in that neighborhood. Because we paved the road before, because we were able to tie them into some, uh, water and sewer services that had a, an impact. Uh, I want to move on to a couple more things, uh, Water View, uh, a couple meetings ago, it was reported that there was, uh, laying fiber optic. Uh, there was some damage to some of the yards and everything, and our commitment was, before they could move on to another job, they had to finish that job to our satisfaction. I know you mentioned that the quality assurance, uh, person is the individuals, uh, but have we allowed that contractor to move on to other places?
Councilman, I can't even remember which, which contractor that is, actually, we've got about three of them working, and they all won C-Spire, AT&amp;T, and so forth. They're all using subcontractors to do it. The, the one that I'm dealing with right now is our friend Bernie Marinovich's property, um, which I think is also in your ward. And he's, uh, he's, uh, he was upset that the wrong kind of grass was used, so, so we're working with them. We've had the contractor out there to, just to meet with them, and we're doing everything we can to satisfy people. If, you know, we're trying to put their yards back the same way they, we, we found them. AT&amp;T's pushing us real hard to, 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 uh, open up some new areas, but we're holding them back. We, we don't want them starting new work until they're finished what they started. And again, it's, it's, they're all using subcontractors, so you don't recognize the name as AT&amp;T, it's.
Okay, thank you, that, that brings me to my last item, and, and again, under the mayor's report, I appreciate Fofo for you, you kind of being compassionate on what happened. Uh, there was a shooting the other night, uh, over in the Hingen, uh, Place neighborhood, and it happened, uh, quite late, and it was very terrifying and horrifying for a lot of the residents. They called an emergency meeting, uh, the next morning, or, or the next afternoon, actually. And, uh, attended, there was probably nearly thirty-five or forty concerned residents that were there, uh, saying, what can the city do? And my commitment to them was, I'm going to treat this like I live in your neighborhood, and I actually live, uh, in Pelican Bayou that, that, uh, butts up against, uh, Hingen, Hingen Place. And it, it's a different scenario. That corridor, uh, terrorist corridor is what we're talking about, uh, that connects one neighborhood to the other, is a thoroughfare that has become increasingly used by non-residents. That has found that, uh, thoroughfare to be convenient, uh, for whatever they're using it for. But they, there's a lot of traffic from folks that do not live in and around the neighborhoods, uh, and they cut through to Brody, uh, from Pops Ferry constantly back and forth. And it, it, a few years ago, we attempted to put the speed tables in, a couple years ago, in Hingen Place, and later on, we, we put it in, uh, the Pops Ferry landing area as a deterrent for speeding. Uh, but we're not just talking about speeding, we're talking about our population has grown, we're, we're talking about, uh, there's more activity that's occurring. And not only the, in and around the surrounding area, there's probab- that's probably expanding, that people are saying, well, let me go discover what this popular area is, and I, and I think we really need to take action, uh, to have a true deterrent, uh, and it'll be safe for both neighborhoods, if we can deter the additional traffic going, uh, back and forth. So, um, I hear you, Mr. Lawrence, about calling a, a, a town hall meeting, and we'll probably do that in addition to what's in the works now. Uh, but I do want to let the citizens, uh, know that we take it seriously, that this isn't just a traffic issue, it's a safety issue when bullets are flying around, uh, in your neighborhood, and you can't sleep, and you're concerned about the safety of your kids, whether they're outside or inside. And with the remainder of my time, I'd, I'd like to, uh, call the HOA President up to say a few words, uh, before we move on to the rest of the agenda. If you go ahead and come up and, uh, state your name, Catherine. By the way, she reminded me that, uh, a long time ago, a long time ago, uh, I taught her Sunday School class at St. Paul, and, and, you know, I've got some fond memories of that, and I appreciate you kind of helping me relive that a little bit. She'll tell you.
Good afternoon, and thank you, all of you, for, um, granting us the opportunity to, to voice our concerns today. Um, my name is Catherine Leary, and I'm the president of the HOA Hingen Place subdivision. Uh, we are, uh, excuse me, we're a covenants neighborhood, and we each pay in homeowner fees. I reside at eight one zero Darius Drive, directly next to the stop sign and speed home that was installed. When my family moved back to the coast after having to leave due to Katrina, we chose Biloxi for the Blue Ribbon Schools, and we chose this small neighborhood for safety. My neighbors and I are back again today, pleading for the protection of our children, our properties, and our property value. The measures taken to enforce speeding are not a deterrent, but more of a launching pad resulting in a car on a retaining wall on my neighbor's front lawn. The traffic continues to escalate as a cut through, and was never intended to have the amount of traffic it currently has. The transient people cutting through have no regard for our community, no vested interest, but a release valve to Brody Road, and all for convenience. What happened Saturday evening was terrifying. A thirty-plus round shootout in our homes, in front of my house. While a party roared on in, in another neighborhood. It only seems these kids learned was how to hide out and escape in a neighborhood without getting caught. We've lost our patience for Band-Aids, we need a solution. Would you help? In, in the reassert, reinsurance of our safety? Our children's safety? I would love to invite each of you to bring your children, your grandchildren, come play in my front yard, you'd be appalled. I also speak on behalf of all of my neighbors. Um, another neighbor, Kelly Reynolds Bruceard, who is unable to be here today, she lives at one five six eight Lucius Street, situated at the intersection of Darius and Lucius. She says she sees the traffic and volume entering and exiting our small neighborhood, it causes great stress. She's legitimately concerned about the safety of our children. When purchasing this house, it was to enjoy a neighborhood with little traffic, as our neighborhood is small. This is not proven to be the case. We implore you to please protect our children and our property by installing the gate. It will not hinder emergency access, it will prevent people with zero vested interest in our neighborhood from driving recklessly through our streets, which will result, which will result in a catastrophic outcome. Safety must always trump convenience. Thank you in advance for taking action to protect the residents of Hingen Place. Now, I would like to invite my neighbors to come forward, so you can hear what they have to also say.
Ms. Leary, that will be in the public comment section, and I'll, I'll certainly give everybody their due time in the public comment section, okay?
Thank you.
Really appreciate you saying those words, I thought it was real important, so thank you. Give me a second. You know, I just want to say this, uh, you, you feel the emotion of our communities, and you feel the, the passion they have for the quiet enjoyment of their neighborhood, that they want to raise their families in a safe, quiet, fun environment, which is Biloxi, Mississippi. What happened the other night is not Biloxi, Mississippi, it's not Hingen Place, it's not any place. And I assure you, you've got the full commitment of the city, as I'm hearing it, uh, to take the steps to make things safer, and to make y'all feel like you have your quiet enjoyment of your neighborhood, and we'll do everything, I promise you, uh, to make it better. Anyone else have any comments? Anyone? Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I, I, uh, I'd just like to point out, I think this came up when, when we discussed at budget discussions and workshops. I think almost everybody up here said that speeding was an issue in the neighborhood. But in this case, when you have, as, um, Ms. Leary pointed out, you have people using your neighborhood as a shortcut, I know, I've got a couple of neighborhoods, that's the big concern with them. Uh, just the litter, the speeding, blowing through the stop signs, safety of people. So i- it, it's not an issue that's going away, and I'd be surprised if other council members didn't have some similar neighborhood, so. It's just, we need to address it at some point, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale, anyone else before we move on to the rest of the agenda? Alright, council reports, uh, are now concluded, we'll move on to the public agenda, citizen comments section of the agenda. We have forty-five minutes total in this, uh, part of our agenda today. Each person that comes up to speak will have three minutes. Uh, if you'd come up to the front of the room, take a seat, state your name and your address. Uh, it's not a question and answer session, uh, but you're able to talk on any subject, uh, that you would like to. I'm going to start on my right, your left, is there anyone that would like to come up and speak?
Uh, my name is Roy Edwards, I live at fifteen seventy-seven Lucius Street. I've lived in the community for a very long, long time. Uh, one of the reasons I'm in Biloxi, my father retired here, Air Force. But primarily the reason I live here, and I brag about this to all my friends everywhere I go, and I tell them this community is a very safe community. It's just a, it's a place to really raise a child. Because we don't usually have this kind of stuff that we had Saturday night. It's not the first time these kids have gathered, by the way, over there, and on, over on the subdivision for our party. We figured, I know I did, I figured it was a prom night, you know, they probably just had a big prom dance, and actually, they weren't too bad, they were quiet. But last Saturday night, things just totally changed. We saw that building, as the evening went on, it pretty much just took over the neighborhood, and, um, so people don't feel safe when that starts to happen. And then when we saw all the shooting, I'm sitting in the living room, my wife is right back here with me, and, uh, we heard pow, pow, pow. We knew it was gunfire, I went outside to see where it was coming from. So then we heard another pow, pow, pow. They've got video, and I've seen it myself, where they're actually seeing, you can see the muzzle flash, or the guns, uh, as they shoot, as they're going through our neighborhood. And we've had people pick up cartridges out of their yard and out of the street. We've had, uh, people whose houses got hit by gunfire. It's definitely, I mean, I, I don't, I don't have any kids at home. I do have grandkids, I love them dearly, and they do come visit me from time to time. I'm glad to see that Mr. Guns actually said, let's say, you know, let's pray for the young girl that got shot, because I, I wondered, and I checked her as much as I can with other people, find out what kind of condition is she in. I know she's in pretty bad shape, and I know I'll pray every day for her recovery. And I'm sincere in that, because this should not happen to anyone, at least, at least a small child. And I know some people want to say, this is not a child, she's old enough not to be, but yeah, she's, she's somebody's child. Well, yeah, this has got to, this got to stop, and, uh, I really don't, I mean, I, I read the news, you know, watch it on TV. We've got a lot of cities in this country that are in really bad shape. You know, a neighbor to the, to my right actually, who came from Chicago. And of course, she had, you know, she says, how am I supposed to go back to Chicago? I said, woo, I said, you know, this community is a good community, and it'll stay this way. And I said, because we've got a good police department here, we've got a good city administration, and, and a council. And if they say they're going to take care of this problem, in my heart, I believe you. I believe you, I've seen you on operation, I know what you can do and what you can't do. I retired from the fire department here, actually, as deputy chief of operations. Uh, I've worked as a reserve police officer in the city of Biloxi for twenty-eight years.
So your time is up.
It is, I actually got a little old. So, um, you know, I've enjoyed that, I've seen what can happen in the city, and it really needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Carmen Steed, and we live in one five eight four Lucius. We used to live in one five six five Lucius. We moved there, we built a house in two thousand and seven. We liked the neighborhood so much, that as we got older, we decided to buy an additional land and build right there. We always felt safe in the United States. I was born in Spain, and we spent mo- most of our forty-six year in Biloxi. And I felt like Biloxi was the safest place in the world until this past weekend. When, uh, safety reached you so close, you look at the life in a different way. These people, they shoot in my son's front yard, where my grandchild, three and a half year old, was sleeping in that room. That's scary. You look at life in a different perspective now on. Yeah, the police and safety came over, but it was too late, it was way too late. So after that, we really don't feel safe in our place, and we feel like we need to do something about it. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left?
I'm Horace Steed, I, I live with the wife at fifteen eighty-four Lucius. We've never had a problem of safety as bad as what we've got right now. We're worried about gang retaliation from that shooting. We talk about having a, uh, meeting in fifteen days and all this kind of stuff. I'm worried about this weekend and the next weekend before that fifteen days. Because there's going to be retaliation from these teenagers, from these gangs. Something's got to be done about it, because we don't feel safe in our own neighborhoods. And you can tell, I'm an old Air Force retiree. I'm a retired post office too, because I've been in all kinds of different communities. I felt safe there, just when we built the second house over there. But I don't feel safe in my own house anymore, even with the alarm systems and all the cameras and all this mess. It's hard to say for an American that I don't feel safe in my own country. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Bridgette Davis, and I live at fifteen eighty-eight Lucius Street. Um, I waited forty years to return back to the Gulf Coast, I'm a coast girl, I was born here. In fact, it was my ancestors that landed right here to discover this area and conquer it for France. So my seventh great-grandfather landed here in sixteen ninety-nine, I'm vested here. Uh, I married a Louisiana boy, and I moved to Louisiana to raise our family. And the whole time we were raising our children, I, I said, I came here to Louisiana, it's been great, it's been fun, but now take me back home. Um, now that he is, my husband is retired, he began to search, where would we live? He searched high and low, the coast, from one end to the other, to make my dreams come true, and he chose Hingen Place in Biloxi. Some of that came from my connection with Fofo. Fofo supported me, I brought an underwater robotics program here to Biloxi for middle and high school kids. I'll always be indebted to you for that. Uh, because I believe in Mississippi kids, I should also tell you, I'm a professor at the University of Southern Mississippi. I train future teachers. Mr. Tisdale, you don't remember me, but I remember you, and I thank you for all the work that you have done as well. Anyway, so we chose Hingen Place, it was a small place, it just seemed like the perfect place. We built our dream home, I actually took two years to design it. Um, it, it took a lot of investment for us to make this our home. After moving into the subdivision, I realized I didn't do all of my homework. When I started trying to walk in my subdivision, I realized that it was a dangerous place to walk. Um, the traffic is too fast, um, people don't stop at the stop sign, it's dangerous just across the road. Um, so I took up joining a gym, I've never joined a gym in all of my life, I've always liked being outdoors. But I don't trust walking in my subdivision because of the traffic. And it's not traffic of my neighbors, it's people traveling through. I can't even tell you that it's traffic between the two neighborhoods, I wish I could tell you that. I actually think it's traffic beyond the two neighborhoods, it's a quick pass-through, it's a quick way to get around. So I plead with you, especially, um, I will, I will say, that Saturday night, I felt like for a moment that I was in a war zone. I watched everything happen. I watched everything happen from my laundry room window. Um, I couldn't do anything about it. At the time, you can imagine, I'm looking at my Louisiana husband that brought me from a place that was safe to my home, that I begged him to bring me back to the coast. And suddenly we were trapped in a war zone, and we couldn't get out. We couldn't get help. Um, it was terrifying is the best word that I have for you. Absolutely terrifying. I'm asking you all to really protect my subdivision. I'm not asking to separate from, from another subdivision. I'm an educator. I'm a former classroom teacher. I love kids. I value kids. I value people.
Ma'am, your time is up.
That's possible. This little girl may, we may have the, we may have the criminals arrested had we had some protection so that the people couldn't have gotten out so quickly.
I need you to sign in. Just, just sign in, please. Anyone else on my right, your left?
Hello, I'm Kristy Elise. I'm the president of Gulf Coast Produce. I raced here to make sure that I attended this meeting. We can't deter violence. We can wish to God that things wouldn't happen. Things are gonna happen in subdivisions. This particular subdivision, Hingen Place. My address is fifteen ninety-five Lucius Street. I'm on two parcels that I built, plus I bought the third parcel. We pay a lot in tax revenue for our property values. Stephen Shivers and Charlie Gant was our original builders. When I went to them, we could have built anywhere's in Biloxi. We could choose anywhere's we wanted to move to. We wanted this particular plot. The reason why is Charlie Gant and Stephen Shivers made it clear to me. I asked about that entrance. Why are we, we're two different entities. Why do we have an access into Pops Ferry Landing? He said, Kristy, right now, it's a brand-new subdivision. You have to get a certain amount of numbers of homes, and that will be closed off. I took that to the bank, thinking that was the truth. So many homes get built in Hingen Place, we get the access blocked off completely. Not a Band-Aid, a permanent fixture to stop the entrance and exiting from one Pops Ferry Landing, having three access. We have one. That's all we need. We have ten other subdivisions around our property that has one in and one out. You have a trailer park on Cedar Lake, one-way in, which is tiny. We have thirty-five homes, thirty-six, this thirty-sixth one is being built as we speak. That's it. We've maxed out our little subdivision, our private subdivision. All we're asking is for something tangible. Not a Band-Aid, not a speed bump. They hit those speed bumps and they think it's funny, cause they try to go as fast as they can. This neighbor right here was mugged, her car broken into right when she was building her new house. Where did they run to? Into that subdivision. They come out of the subdivision and they go back into the subdivision and they're gone. There's hundreds of homes there. Our subdivision don't need speed bumps. None of those speed. We all have children. We all have fur babies. We all have dogs. We're trying to protect what we built. What happened Saturday, most properties appreciating value. Ours depreciated. Nobody wants that video being shown. I leave Monday morning, WXXXV videoing the property, Hattiesburg is down here. People are talking about this subdivision as if we're affiliated with this. We're, we're not. But my property value just got affected by something that's next door. Three entrances to a subdivision is not necessary. One entrance into Destiny is right across the street. We have one way into Hingen Place. We have less homes.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Elise. Uh, before we continue, I wanna invoke the executive privilege. I forgot to read this in the record. You alluded to, uh, other subdivisions that have one exit, including Destiny Plantation, Goose Point, and ninety Residence, the Enclave, Cedar Crescent, Ben Oaks, Deer Cove, Live Oak on the Bay, Greystone, Cedar Lake Subdivision, and Bridge, Bridgefield. I just wanted to read that into the record. Anyone else on my right?
If he fails to, uh, read the part that says, you know, code with the reason for two exits, says, our code.
Good afternoon. Um, my name's Beau Lamy. I'm at fifteen eighteen, fifteen eighty-one Lucius Drive. You're really looking at two issues here, you know, the traffic problem and the criminal problem. I think most of the residents here is gonna be talking about their criminal problems is the most important problem we have. But we moved in this July, be five years into the subdivision. And I just wanna tell you something about our neighbors. I've just, it's a small neighborhood, and the word respect just keeps coming up. We respect each other's property. We look after each other. The kids around there, we watch them. If a car comes and we see kids, we slow down. I mean, it's just a lot of respect in a small subdivision, and that's how we want it. And that's why we bought there, and that's why we wanna keep the values of our property up. But since I've been there, the traffic flow coming from Pops Ferry Landing, at first it was a nuisance. And then it got to be a problem because they were running stop signs. They wouldn't stop at a stop sign. The city helped and put speed bumps up there, did not help. To be honest with you, where they put the speed bump at was not even by the intersection. It was further on down the street. So people were coming from Pops Ferry Landing, just running a stop sign, and they finally would slow down not to tear their car up. But the whole purpose, they did not stop at the stop sign, and it's got progressively worse and worse and worse. And what's happening now, they've turned this road into a thoroughfare now. That whole subdivision considers it a shortcut, and it's never was designed for that. And that's what we need your help for right there, is to put some kind of a barrier there to stop this, because someone is gonna get hurt there. And you can see right now, it was a, it was an exit point for this criminal activity just right down the street. And like Kristy said, these videos are getting out. I know, I saw one today that showed the actual party inside that house, which was unbelievable. And if that gets on national news, that's what sells, and that's when I hurt our neighborhood. And we need to stop that activity as soon as possible, and we need your help. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right?
My name's Percy Fungay. Me and my wife has just built in De- in Hingen Place, eight eleven Darius Drive. We were right on the corner of where the shooting was. We're right there on the, like I said, at the corner of Darius Drive and Lucius. And, uh, they, those people come out of Pops Ferry Landing, there ain't no slowing down, nothing. There's two stop signs, one at their place, and right there at our house. They just make a S, come right through there, don't stop, don't slow down. There's so many kids in our neighborhood. We have two young grandkids that come over there a lot to play with the other kid. And I mean, it's loaded with kids, and they don't, they don't slow up, and they fly through there. So something's gotta be done. Like you said, the speed bump they put there, that's just a launching pad. That, you need something. You gotta stop there, close that area off, something's gotta be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did it, come on up? You'll be next.
Hi y'all. My name is Wendy Peavy, and y'all hang on to your hats, cause I live on Ellington Drive, eight thirty-three, so Pops Ferry Landing representing right here. I do agree that what we are dealing with, I mean, I can appreciate the, the traffic issue. We have the traffic issue. We're right down the street from where we got our, our speed bumps. But the criminal element issue is really why I'm here today. Um, the epicenter of that event is a known problem. It's been a known problem for years. I've lived in the neighborhood since twenty seventeen. I've been in contact with neighbors because we had had some concerns. We, we've heard all kinds of things. Part of the problem, th- they're responsible for our speed bumps as well in our neighborhood. Um, and I agree that right now, the, the fear of retaliation is pretty scary. On Saturday night, after the gunfire started, we immediately jumped up and went to call nine-one-one. It sounded like it was in our backyard. It was actually two houses in front of us. Um, immediately after that gunfire started, we had dozens of young teenagers running past our home, up Ellington Drive towards the exit. We had cars speeding out of there. I know y'all have seen the video, heard the squealing tires. It was absolutely terrifying. Two children ran past our, our yard with a gun. We had, our neighbor's video camera showed that we had kids hiding behind our cars and our, our trash cans. It was a terrifying night. I would ask, because I'm very concerned about the response that happened on Ellington from our police department. We called nine-one-one three times. We were only able to get through twice. It was ten minutes apart. There were still kids in cars flying past our house by the third call. No police officer ever came there. They could have stopped. I mean, that's a surprise there weren't any arrests made. Half those kids were back to wherever they came from by the time whatever was going on over on Rachel, we had some response. But I would ask that if we could step up some patrol in the area and really pay attention when people are reporting things that we know are going on, really pay attention to it. Because some of this could have been put to a stop long before it ever escalated out of control on Saturday night. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Hello. Uh, my name's Wayne Byers. I live in, uh, Hingen Place at one five six six Quinton Court. Um, I've been there for twelve years. We moved in, uh, we came from Gulfport and moved to Biloxi, which was a, which was a deal to get my wife to come over here. And, uh, we've loved every minute of living over here. I've been very involved with, uh, sports and fellow in the youth aspect. I was president of the league for a while and was coaching football, basketball, baseball, but I've also been involved with the high school. I have a son who's sixteen, who plays for Biloxi High School, and, um, we had just gotten home that night, um, from Vicksburg, from a playoff game. Buddy mom was, we're sitting in the garage when the, when the gunshots went off, and his son was about to come over and would have been there precisely at the time of the gunfire. So this certainly hits home, but what I wanted to talk about was that the events that have kinda led up to this. This is not something new that's happened here. You know, we had several years back, um, an intoxicated female hit the entrance to our neighborhood. She was uninsured. Um, the neighborhood came together. We had paid for that. I think it, we each pitched in like two or three hundred dollars and rebuilt that. Um, there's been three or four at least nailboxes that have been run over. Um, and then Mr. Parks, last year, we had an intoxicated person run through the stop sign about fifty miles an hour into his front yard. So this is an ongoing issue that not a single incident that has happened has been the result of somebody that lives in our neighborhood. And, and I don't know that every single person's lived in there, but they were going to Pops Ferry Landing. So what we're getting at asking for is, is a permanent solution to make sure that, that this, nothing ever happens again, cause this has been progressively worse. And at some point, somebody's gonna die from getting run over from, you know, a speeder or, God forbid, you know, getting shot. Um, the other thing I would say is, these, this, the events this weekend, these, these people were invited into this neighborhood. It happened in a house, um, it happened to be high schoolers. I'm sure you guys know a lot of the events. I know you've seen the videos. But to my understanding, which has come from the mother, was she was there. She helped orchestrate this party. We, they knew that there was gonna be gang activity coming in this neighborhood. They had the same party happen about three weeks, three or four weeks ago. My son said, Dad, there's gonna be gangs there. And I said, he wanted to drive over there and look at it. I said, absolutely not. You're staying away from there. And this is at a reoccurring party where they're inviting people to come into their neighborhood and use our entrance and park their cars. And then we resulted in a gunfire, which was absolutely terrifying. So what we're asking today is, is, is to, is to do it quickly. Don't wait until something else happens. We need, we need something now. Even if it's a temporary situation until we can close it off for good. We need to restrict people who don't live in our neighborhood from driving through it. And that's what we're asking for today is a quick response and a permanent solution.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you guys for having us. Uh, my name's Blake Kelly. I live at eight oh eight Darius Drive, right across the street from the Fungays where all this took place at. Um, I'm not gonna just beat a dead horse. All my neighbors have pretty much laid out everything that's, um, important for you guys. The one thing that I haven't known is we've all taken this track about two years ago. Kenny can attest to that. And we were shot down by the fire chief and the fire department due to a point of access being for the city officials, firemen, police officers to be able to reach Pops Ferry Landing in the amount, in the event of an emergency. Um, I sat out of my mailbox while this was going on. They were literally running past my house. I was fending for my house and my garage, keeping people out of my garage with my own firearm. Keeping people away from our house. Um, not one, well, I'll take that back. One police officer came through our access point for the emergency access, which we were denied for at the, uh, city meeting that we had two years ago. So I just wanted to go on record and say that, that being the side of the city officials saying that they needed to keep that open two years ago for access that I can attest, and so can my cameras on the house, that there was no access granted to the police officers that were on the scene. There was probably, when I walked back there, there was probably seven or eight police officers that were on the scene there. And maybe one of those came through, and I do believe it's the guy that lives back there. I can't really attest to that being true, but it's the same car that comes through there. Uh, with the gentleman that lives back there that's on the police force, so, uh, we would just like to see something happen. Like they said, the concern of it happening as a retaliation in the next weekend or so is a big concern of all ours, um. As far as the speeding, that's just an, a known thing. I think everybody's aware of that. Unfortunately, I think the problem that's gonna occur, if somebody does get hit, it's gonna be a small child. I have three children, ten, seven, and five, and most of the families in our neighborhood have three to four kids that are all within that area. So, uh, if we could please just have your, your blessings to get this done. Maybe we can save the life of a child that's gonna get run over from a speeder, but at the same time deter some of this energy that's coming from both neighborhoods, trying to make it a thoroughfare. And, um, and like I said, it's just, there, there wasn't much of a presence from the police officers coming through that area. So I just wanted to go on record and say that that's not the case at this moment. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room that'd like to speak?
Hello, I'm Kristy Veyar. I live at fifteen sixty-two Quinton Court. I have to tell you guys, I lived in downtown New Orleans before I moved here seven years ago, not seeing my fair share of stuff. I've never been that close to a shooting before in my life. I was shocked, shocked to learn what was happening. And then I saw footage of that party, and I have to say, there should have been police there before there was ever an incident. There's too many people in that house. Something was gonna happen. You can't have that many people at a residence for a party without security. So I'd like to see increased police presence in our neighborhood for the fear that there could be gang violence again. Um, and I'd like to see, you know, that kind of activity not being allowed. Because it's gonna result in violence and danger. I'm a mother of two, a two-year-old and a four-year-old. My little boy Jacob was sleeping in the front of my home. I don't need to be worried that he's gonna be sprayed with bullets in the night. My four-year-old, my two-year-old, I never dreamed that here in Biloxi, that would- My four-year-old, my two-year-old, I never dreamed that here in Biloxi, that would ever be a concern, but it is now. But, you know, I was speaking with my neighbors before this meeting and I was showing off my two little babies, my cutie pies. And they said, oh, my gosh, we've never seen them around. Well, no, because in addition to what's happened with this criminal violence, we've had a public safety issue since I've been there. And I don't feel comfortable having them going on walks because people speed through. And I'm a concerned mother. Maybe I'm overprotective. I would admit I am. But I can't risk it for them. So we stay in our little cul-de-sac. But staying in my little cul-de-sac isn't gonna protect me from spraying bullets as people are driving by or crazed people fleeing a party because violence is broken out. So I just second the wishes of my fellow neighbors here, protection for safety. All of our kids deserve it. The kids in our neighborhood, the kids in the neighborhood behind us. Nobody needs to be endangered. We all need protection. Everyone deserves to feel safe in their home. And that means our neighborhood and every other neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? Anyone in the back of the room? Like to come up and speak?
Good afternoon. My name is George Parks. I live at 174 Hannibal Court, right across the street from Bush Park. I am so proud that you all put the fence up in my neighborhood. I am so proud that we limit the amount of people that comes and be there at the park by having a fence up. And I am proud of the fence that's in Bush Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
You're welcome, Mr. Parks.
Anyone else in the back of the room? Anyone come on up?
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mary Gillis. I ain't one of those people that live in Pops Ferry Landing. I have lived there since 2002. I know the road that you were talking about. Long time ago. We did not want to have a road. We don't know how that got.
We need to just speak into the microphone, please.
I don't know how that road got open, but when that subdivision was built, I moved in in phase one. Hinging wasn't even thought of yet. I'm sorry that your property values may have seemed to have decreased. The girl that got shot is a friend of my son's. She's in the band at Biloxi High. While everybody else is wondering, shots, 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 we are outside trying to get the kids to safety. The car that the girl got shot in was right outside my door. You did not have police tape in front of your house. I'm not worried about my property value.
Let him speak.
The police tape was right there on Rachel Drive. That is where the white car that had the window shot out, where the victim got shot in the head and the shoulder, laid from 11:15 till 3:45 in the morning with the engine running. I ain't one of those people that live in that subdivision. We always feel safe. There's always a police presence. It was even stronger after the shooting. Now, putting up a gate is only going to make things worse. It's gonna make everybody feel like, oh, now I'm a caged animal. I'm serious. Don't please me. You had your point. I'm just stating mine. Yes, there might be a problem with speeding. The speed bumps are in the wrong spot. I will agree with that. But other than that, that neighborhood has been safe from 2002 till today. One incident does not make it a penitentiary.
Thank you, council. My name is Thomas White, and anybody who wants to know, my address is 1570 Rachel Drive, Biloxi, Mississippi, 39532.
Thank you. The lady in the back?
My name is Heather Charleston, and I live at 850 Terrace Court, right across the street from the party. I understand that you guys are mad. I'm so angry. I heard noises out there and me and my three-year-old daughter in the back went out on the porch. And we were outside when this went down. I'm so mad. I don't think a gate is the answer. I've always felt safe. I've seen parties over there. It's never, ever been this bad.
I don't think that we should be punished and lose access to those roads just because of one night of a mistake. Yes, I've seen a lot of speeding, and I do go down your road every day. I don't speed on it, I promise. I have three kids also, and I'm not speeding. Maybe more police presence, yes. Police could have got there faster, a lot faster. But I don't think one night of a mistake needs a gate. I don't. That's not what, I don't.
Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name is Terry Fairley. I live at 1595 Rachel Drive. In 2018, a push was made to put up a wall, a barrier, some type of fence to cut off Pops Ferry Landing from Henning Place. I opposed it. I work. I work in Gulfport. Was not able to come to any meeting. Passed an email. Our son attends, I have a nine-year-old son. You know, you coached him. He attends North Bay Elementary, where I sit on the board of the PTO. I use Terrace Court to drop my son off every morning. His father uses that exit to go to work at Keesler. He's a military member of the military. I work in Gulfport and I use it to go home every day when I'm coming back home. If Terrace Court is closed off, it would be more difficult and take longer for emergency vehicles to get to any resident that lives on the southern end of Pops Ferry Landing. I saw the videos. That party was horrible, horrible. It's not the first time that a party has been thrown at that particular house. One house in the whole subdivision is your epicenter of the problem. Speeding in the neighborhoods, both neighborhoods, that's an issue. As the gentleman said before, the speed bumps are in the wrong place. I didn't like it when I saw the speed bumps put where they were put. They're in the wrong place. And I heard you, Mayor, when you said you're interested in protecting property value and
safe for everybody.
and life. Whose property value are you protecting? I live in Pops Ferry Landing. I've been there since 2016 where I purchased my home. The house where the party occurred, to my understanding, she's not even a homeowner. She rents. They rent. I don't know her personally. But it's not the first time they've thrown a party like that. In 2020, during the shutdown, when we were under COVID restrictions, shouldn't have more than 20 people in an enclosed area. They threw a large party. The police showed up in. When I got up and looked out my front window because I heard loud music bumping down the street, and I'm like, who is bumping loud music in this neighborhood? And I looked out my front window and saw all the cars lined up. I immediately knew whose house they were going to. As they stated earlier, police should have been there much sooner. When I heard the first pops, I immediately thought, is that fireworks? Because the way my house sits is one block away, one block over from where that party occurred. So I can see the stop sign, the intersection of Terrace Court and Rachel Drive from my house. When I heard more pops, more pops, more pops, I knew it was gunfire. I called 911. Took them a minute to answer. I gave them my address. Y'all gotta get here now. There's gunfire, gunfire. I see kids running. My ring doorbell didn't catch all of it. I see kids running. A car pulled into my driveway. I didn't know who this SUV belonged to, but it pulled into my driveway. I get scared. I'm thankful to God that my son was not home that night. He was away that weekend. But my other neighbors, who all have kids, we all have kids, their kids were home. They're traumatized because of the actions of one household. It is not fair for the residents of Pops Ferry Landing to lose access or be punished for the actions of one household. I'm asking you to consider all properties, all neighborhoods, not just one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room?
I'm Ian Brown. I live in Hingen Place, 1565 Quinton Court. Grew up in Biloxi, Jeff Davis Elementary, Fernwood Middle School, Biloxi High. Made my way back to Biloxi after 20 years of being away. Moved into this neighborhood less than 12 months ago. And at first meeting with my neighbors, they asked me, what house did you move into? And I explained where, and they said, well, thank goodness for you that you're in a cul-de-sac, which confused me. And I said, well, why do you feel that way? And they said, well, it's like the Indy 500, up and down our main thoroughfare. I have two golden retrievers. My wife can attest that when we walk the dogs in the morning, we're always looking over our left or right shoulder, looking for the next car that might hit us as it whizzes around, you know, the bend. I think we all agree that safety trumps convenience at any day, and we don't feel safe. And I think something needs to be done about it. And I won't, you know, again, beat a dead horse, but I have spent my whole life, you know, saving up enough money to move back to Biloxi. And I've thought that I found the neighborhood that best suited, you know, what we have saved and strived to, you know, to become and move into. And, you know, now, you know, I feel like something definitely needs to be done. I'm 100% behind, you know, having a gate put up to stop speeding. And of course, you know, as of this last weekend, the terrible atrocities that occurred, just looking for something to be done and very much appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Steed?
I'm actually on duty, but I'm James Steed at 1578 Lucius. Saturday night, I had to go check to make sure that my children were still breathing as they were sleeping in their bedrooms. And let me tell you, that's a gut-wrenching feeling. Which, after that, it prompted me to kind of go back on my camera footage. And what it taught me is that this isn't an isolated incident. I could only go back so long, but late at night, 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, they congregate in front of my house. I don't know what they're doing, but it is suspicious activity to be in an area that you don't reside in. The thoroughfare is what's causing that, you know? It's become a thoroughfare, and it wasn't designed to be that way. It has jeopardized our safety. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room? We're about to run out of time.
My name is Lawrence Misco. I live at 849 Terrace Court, right next to where the party was. Been brought to the police's attention many, many, many times of the activity that has been going on at that house for years since they moved in into Noah Vale. And last Saturday night was unacceptable. They knew what was going on at the house. They knew what was happening time and time again because it happened several weeks ago. The officer that lives to the north of me came out when all, everything was going on, waiting on the other officers and everybody to come to kind of disperse the crowd and everything. So unfortunately, all of this has happened from one person, and that one person only had that household. It is a rental house, and as of this morning, we found out that they've been evicted. How long they will be there to get out, we don't know, but they have been evicted. And I think that's 90% of the problem with the traffic, the flow, because there are people constantly in and out of that house all day long, all hours. Morning, noon, night, it doesn't matter. They have free reign. And it's gang members, it's, you name it, it's there. And I've called numerous times. I mean, it's, like I said, to Noah Vale. So hopefully something gets done. You know, it's very tragic what happened, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Misco. Anyone else on this side of the room? Anyone else that I may have missed?
I just want to say to those neighbors across the way here, we don't hate them. We don't. But, you know, when we're having safety issues like we're having, safety is gonna trump convenience every time. I know it's convenient to come down that road. It's a shortcut. I mean, I go out our entrance all the time. And I go to Keesler a lot because I'm retired Navy, too. But the thing of it is, it's an easy route. It's an easy route. Except for the school one, it slows you down.
Thank you, sir.
I want this to get into our contest where everybody hates each other. The only thing I'm trying to say is that this is the first time, right, it is the first time in that neighborhood. But in Chicago, it started with a first time. In St. Louis, it starts with a first time. And we want to do something now before we have a second time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, this is going to conclude public comments. I'm gonna just add that stay tuned. This isn't over. You have elected us to represent you. You've trusted us with your vote. We understand this is an emotional issue. You can't take that out of the equation, and we will do the right thing. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the policy agenda.
Orders to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to stormwater pond landscaping.
I'll make a motion.
Did everybody hear the motion? All right, let's just give it about another 30 seconds. Okay, the clerk would so commonly restate?
Sure.
Item A.
Orders to amend the land development ordinance pertaining to stormwater pond landscaping.
I'll make a motion.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Barrett. Do we need a second for a first reading? All right, signed by Mr. Daring. This is a first reading. Item B.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment for two parcels of land measuring 6.9 acres from neighborhood business to regional business for property located at 13193 Hustley Road.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
All right, moved by Mr. Barrett, signed by Mr. Tisdale. This is a first reading. Item C.
Orders to redesignate polling places.
Who moved it?
Gines and Tisdale.
Mr. Gines? You moved it. You have polling places? All right, Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Mr. Lawrence since it's a
Mr. Lawrence?
I think he had raised an issue about the location of Ward 1, the polling place.
I'd like to amend that to state that Ward 1, the Gruert Center, is the one they're actually trying to pass on this today. But all the people that live west of Biloxi, 436 people voted in the Lopez Public Safety Center. Only 99 people voted at the Gruert Center. So then we added more people. Then we take in a bunch of Ward 3 with this new ward line. So we're gonna have more people in west Biloxi. So the polling place should be set up at the Lopez Public Safety Center, not the Gruert Center.
Is that your amendment?
That's my amendment.
All right.
You need to have everything in it. It's 174th Avenue. You need to have all that written there. So.
All right, we have proposed amendment to move it to state the address again, or where do you want to move it?
Right. Gonna move it to the Lopez Quay Public Safety Center, 174th Avenue.
All right. All right.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion? Mr. Deming?
I think on that, that was Stacy's thoughts were, it's not air-conditioned at Lopez. It may or may not interfere with the police and fire, and that, but I don't know if it's a problem for you, chief, or not.
We typically have to move our units out and wash down the proper hall before, you know, the night before. I know the polling, people have complained in the past about the, there being no AC during some of the summertime voting sessions. But we can make it work. I mean, we have for twenty-something years.
I think it's wherever, wherever you'd like it. I think that was, it doesn't really matter. I think, our thought was, it's more convenient to have it at Grueh, and it's just four or five blocks away.
I think that eighteen percent of people voted at the Public Safety Center. Eighteen percent voted at the Grueh Center. So I'd advise you people to go vote, make it convenient, and no one will complain about the air conditioning either.
I think the parking is, maybe there's more parking at Grueh, but, you know, it's...
Definitely more parking than anybody votes now.
Mr. Deming, you have any other comments?
Sure.
That's pretty dramatic. Anyway, any other comments from anyone? All right, all in favor of the amendment? Those opposed? The amendment carries. Now we'll vote on the resolution as amended, or all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item D.
Orders to amend ordinance number twenty-three fifty-four relating to temporary sign permits.
All right, who moved it? All right, Mr. Deming, you moved it. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Newman? Anyone else?
Yes, I have a comment.
Mr. Tisdale?
I'm not in favor of the resolution. We're extending something that was implemented, these changes after Katrina because of the economic climate at the time. I think my, respectfully, I think my colleagues note that it's, it's, it's an economic issue to get folks into businesses. My personal belief is, it looks kind of tacky. You have a lot of these, particularly in my ward. Some are in great condition, some aren't, some have four, five, or six flags up or temporary, or banners up. To me, it's just a nice, or that's always been my position. I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. The only comment I have, I've proposed this measure, and it's listening to the preponderance of business owners that have asked for the consideration. We still are under stressful times with different economic pressure, with labor, with products going up, and this is a means to advertise that, however, I do agree with Mr. Tisdale. There should be a limit, and I believe the verbiage in this does allow for limits of how many temporary signs can be at any particular location. And I want to also recognize Mr. Deming for him working on some of the additional verbiage to try to get it in a useful form. And that's all I have to say.
I just, Robert, did everything you wanted, you adjusted the wording you wanted to put in there? That was always a concern of yours.
It is. It's acceptable, and for Mr. Counselor Tisdale, there is some language in there that gives our code office the authority to remove things that are in disrepair. So if they're not, if they're tattered or faded, coming apart, they can't require them to be removed.
Not a comment. So I noticed that it was substituted, and what was removed, and I think, and I appreciate the time you spent on this, Robert. You and I have talked about this before. What was struck was, shall be limited to one per business unless such business is more than a hundred feet of frontage, in which case the business may have one temporary sign per hundred feet of frontage. I believe that was taken out. So my thought is, I've got a hundred feet of frontage. How many signs can I put up there? One. That's currently what this, if I've got, I'm on a corner line, I'm thinking of the, where the old Winn-Dixie is. On the corner of Pass Road and Pops Ferry, there are a number of businesses there. But you've got frontage on two streets. How many signs can I, I know they have a subway, for example. How many signs can subway put up? I'm asking because they had four at one time, two on Pass Road, sometimes perhaps three, and two on Pops Ferry Road. But I'm just, and I know it's difficult. I'll just leave it at that, but just for the audience who may be viewing, from a business owner, I checked the frontage. Give me some idea of what the formulation is of how many signs I can have on my property. One per frontage? Just one? That's an improvement. I'm still in favor. That's an improvement. I appreciate Mr. Deming's work on this. Thank you, Robert. We're getting closer to yes. All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Measure passes six to one. Move on to item E.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment for two parcels of land measuring forty acres from agricultural and residential estate to RS ten Logan City, single-family residential for two parcels fronting Jim Burge Road.
Move by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Barrett?
Last week, we tabled this because there was a couple people who had showed up that didn't call, and they had a couple concerns after the meeting. Mr. Schifel, myself, and those residents met, got everything squared away, so we're good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Gans. You second it. Any, anyone else?
Explain to me the flooding problem that was having. How did they resolve that?
There was no flood problem. They were worried about some, some property behind him if they were going to clear that, because that's where all the water runs. But that, that portion of property is not going to be touched at all, correct, Mr. Schifel? That's going to be left as an area for water to run through from the residents around there. It won't be, it won't be touched at all.
Double checking, you know, because you have, just like water, you have a lot of problems flooding, just like us, a lot of water, a lot of wetting, a lot of problems.
No, it's not going to be...
Pretty much.
Yeah, they're not going to be clearing that or building all that or anything. That's going to be left as is.
Okay, any other discussion? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll move on to the resolutions. Item F.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision plot approval for fifty-nine lot, single-family residential subdivision for two unaddressed parcels running Jim Burge Road.
Chair, entertain a motion.
I already got it.
Oh. It was tabled, okay. Mr. Barrett?
This is the same piece property.
Mr. Gans? Mr. Lawrence? Anyone else? All in favor? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Move on to item G.
Resolution granting conditional use approval with areas to authorize the establishment of a attached apartment located at two seven one Iverville Drive.
Entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Discussion? Are we all in favor?
Yeah, I have no comment on it. It's all good.
You good? Everybody good?
Yeah.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at three fifty Howard Avenue.
We have a motion?
You move it. I'll second it.
Lawrence, Mr. Gans, second it.
I was trying to make sure I have all this right. Mr. Ed Chamber, tell him that this is a spot we could actually have short-term rentals in. So I called him, come, get up here. You know, people, I got, I got everybody with the short-term rentals. I'm going to make sure we do this right, so I get all my ducks in a row. Now, he said, because this is listed as limited business.
Limited business, that's correct. And it is eligible for short-term rentals.
And all that section runs across, it's all limited business on Howard Avenue.
That's correct.
So that really not affecting the neighborhoods?
Not affecting the neighborhood.
So, okay. Just to let y'all know, I did my homework, make sure we had that right.
You're good? Anyone else have any comments?
We had checked it.
There being none, call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Consent agenda. I'll move it on the consent agenda. Second.
All right. We have a motion duly seconded. Mr. Gans?
I have no comments. I mean, no questions.
All right, Mr. Barrett?
Nothing.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, Mr. Leonard, if I could see you on item I after the council meeting today. I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Deming? Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
Come on, George.
On B? Right, we reduce this sixty-four thousand. That's a good thing. When we increase these things, we all got to pay everybody and brother more money. When we decrease, do we get any money back from engineers? Anybody else? Yeah, sixty-four thousand reduced, that's fine. We always take a lot of money each time we increase these things.
On item five B, change order twelve, contractor wants to see if you use some of the concrete that he's removing and use it as a aggregate base for our roads. The cost savings will be, not that we get money back, but it will be less to build the project. And so by doing such, we'll be able to use those funds on future projects.
Those taking you seven sixty-four thousand. Every week, so we pay everybody, every time we increase anything, we got to pay you, we got to pay the lawyers, we got to pay everybody and brother. When you decrease, do we get any money back? That's my question.
We don't get money back directly. We save money on the overall project, and that money can be used to the next project. And we actually anticipate saving much more than sixty-four thousand. We're giving this as a test case for this contractor, see if he can meet the right gradation requirements on the aggregate. Thank you.
And just one other one, G. This third amendment for engagement letter with the, we extended this, does it cost us money, or are we just writing letters? I noticed the contract we have, what goes with expenses with that, anything? That's G. Like in George.
That's just Jason, Jason Thomas, Jason Thomas, our financial advisor. His term was expiring, so we're just renewing it.
Say it again?
Jason Thomas, Jason Thomas, the financial advisor who works, I guess, on the commission, on the bonds. His contract is expiring, I think, at the end of the month, so we're just renewing it.
So he's just retaining him?
Yes.
All right, before we vote on this, I'd just like to ask if there are any exceptions. Mr. Lawrence, do you have any exceptions?
None.
Mr. Gans?
None.
Mr. Tisdale? Mr. Barrett? I have none. All in favor? Consent agenda. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to code enforcement hearings. Go ahead and open it up.
First item on the agenda, Hawthorne Properties LLC, two fifty-seven Fayard Street. That case has been resolved. Item B, Arthur Paul Kraus, two thirty-nine B Street. I would ask for thirty days on that. He came and met with us today, and he's wanting to take care of the remaining issues.
All right, motion by Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Gans. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Six oh, code enforcement hearings are now closed. Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Have a second? Seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion? All in favor? We stand adjourned.